That off.
Looks close enough. I'd like to call to order the October 14 meeting of the Escalon Planning Commission. And if you would, please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the clerk would take role.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Here.
Commissioner Castellanos?
Here.
Commissioner Willis?
Here.
Commission Vice Chair Thompson?
Here.
Commission Chair Dunbar?
Here. Before our meeting begins, please make sure that all of your cell phones are on silent or vibrate unless you are an on-duty first responder. Tonight, we have a new face with us, City Manager Jalen French would like to introduce him.
Thank you, Commission and audience. We do have a new face, Trevin Barber on this side is the city's newest Development and Community Services Manager. He is starting later this week and has now the privilege to attend this meeting as a first prelude to the city of Escalon.
Welcome, welcome.
Welcome. Now, we would like to consider the minutes from the last meeting. Are there any comments? Additions, deletions?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the September 9 meeting.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
All second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Carrie's 5-0. Commissioner Thompson has a statement.
I just would like to disclose that in my professional capacity as a management analyst with the city of Oakdale, I had previously worked with the developer who's going to be coming for our next application, their agent John Pranitis, on a separate project in the city of Oakdale. However, that prior professional interaction will not affect my ability to make a fair and impartial decision regarding the project before the commission tonight, and I am confident that I can review and consider this matter objectively based solely on the information and evidence presented.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a statement. In my prior profession, I also have had experience with Florsheim Home Development. It is not going to impair my capacity to make a fair judgment on what's on the agenda tonight.
Are there any other statements? Okay. Tonight, we have the largest gathering I've seen for a while. Please be aware that the commission's role here is to review the project and make a recommendation to the city council. So this is one step in the process, and it's not the final step. And please remember that if you have questions during this meeting, for staff or for anyone else, please address them to the commission first, and then we will proceed from that point. Also, I'd like to have a show of hands. How many people would like to or plan to address the commission tonight? Great. We normally keep our comments to five minutes, if we could observe that. If there had been more of you, we would have shortened it, but I think we're going to be fine. So with that, I would like to ask for the staff report on item number one on the agenda.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening, Planning Commission, Jalen French, city staff. We'll start with a little introductions here. The project before you, we all know, is of great community interest. We collectively recognize that. There may be some strong opinions shared tonight, and we certainly welcome those. The process welcomes those. As always, these proceedings, the staff report, the public testimony are to provide as much information as possible to the decision-makers. As the chair mentioned, you are a recommending body onto the city council. Whether it is approved or denied by the planning commission, it will go on to the city council, so yours is a recommendation onto the city council for many of the entitlements before you. So the staff report and the public testimony, again, are to provide as much information as needed for the decision-makers, you being the first of those, council being the second, and then ultimately, LAFCO will decide on the annexation piece. So the staff report will walk through the general and typical topics that we would walk through of any application moving forward. We also spend some time on some of the issues, concerns, questions that have been raised through and during the public, I don't know, public, what do we call it? Where we gathered, public input, the public input process. Some of those are spelled out specifically in the staff report that is before you, but we will talk about those as well. So, the application before you is atypical for Escalon. Last application like this we've had is probably 1999 was the last residential annexation. We'll get into that a little bit, but there are a number of entitlements. And so we'll spend a little bit of time in the beginning kind of walking through each one of those. Entitlements are legal permissions, just setting the stage for everyone. Legal permissions and/or approvals from government agencies like the city of Escalon required to develop or use a parcel of land for a specific purpose or use, basically ensuring compliance with our code, our development standards, and whatever else. So if we, I have it. This is the list of entitlements being sought in this application, and we will go through each one of those. But first, as we generally describe the project, so the proposed project, and this is straight from the staff report, the proposed project seeks city approval of a specific plan and planned development, which would be Plan Development 4, PD-4, to guide the development of two parcels totaling 17.98 acres, which are proposed to be subdivided into 72 lots of one- and two-story, single-family residential units, including underground utilities, street improvements, and sound wall and landscape improvements. Approximately 1.09 acres is to be set aside in the southeastern corner of the project site, directly adjacent to existing Shadowwood Park for the expansion of the combined park and drainage basin. To implement the specific plan, the project also includes a tentative subdivision map that would subdivide the two parcels in accordance with the proposed specific plan. The project would require annexation of the two parcels to the city of Escalon to access public utilities and services provided by the city. So now we'll walk through briefly each one of the entitlements before you. So an annexation is the legal process of adding land that is currently outside of the corporate boundaries of the city into the city, thus expanding its territory. This means the property is actually within San Joaquin County. It does have a zoning classification in San Joaquin County of A220, agricultural urban reserve with a 20-acre minimum. This is a holding zone for those lands outside and adjacent to cities for future development. So in that regard, it's sort of expected to be eventually developed. As was mentioned previously, this is the first proposed annexation into the city since 2002, at which time the now-known Liberty Business Park was brought into the city, and the last residential annexation was Farinelli Ranch, just to the south, in 1999, about 26 years ago. So pre-zone, as you bring it into the city, you pre-zone it. Pre-zone is to establish the future zoning classification of the area outside of the city limits. The pre-zone should and will match the city's general plan. We'll talk about the general plan in a bit. The general plan, so anything outside of the city limits doesn't have a zone, it's not our jurisdiction. The general plan, which looks out 20, 30 years, does identify what property should become. This property has been designated in the general plan for over 20 years. In 2005, the general plan was updated to have a designation of low-density residential, which is consistent with the project tonight. And some of the other entitlements here are brought about because of the city's code. For example, Escalon Municipal Code Section 17.24060 states, "All new residential projects over one acre, except in the downtown area, shall be required to have a planned development overlay or combining district zone." So again, anything over one acre now has a planned development. So the third entitlement on this list is a planned development. That will, in effect, be its zoning. It'll, Plan Development 4. The underlying zoning would be like an R1, lowest-density residential, but this will be planned development, and that is typical per our code for anything over one acre. Further, according to also the zoning code, Chapter 17.61010, owners of parcels of five or more acres are required to submit a specific plan for the ultimate development of the parcels and gain approval of the plan before annexation. So the fourth item here, required per our code, is a specific plan for any project over five acres. Also, a tentative subdivision map, not required necessarily by our code, but general state law, is the first step in formally dividing larger parcels. So you will know that there are two parcels here totaling almost 18 acres. A map, a subdivision map, will divide those two parcels into 72 single-family units, lots, as well as the parkland, the streets, and any common areas. So this is the first step in the process. Then ultimately, there's a final map. Another code-required entitlement here is development agreements. According to Escalon Municipal Code 17.61020, the applicant shall enter into a development agreement as a condition of approval for any annexation. So since we had an annexation, it requires a development agreement. The development agreement, in effect, establishes the terms between the developer and the city for, basically, the planning process and the approval process and into the development process. Another city-required entitlement here is the Inclusionary Housing Agreement. All developers engaging in a residential project shall be required to provide affordable housing and all residential projects that require a tentative map. The developer shall enter into an inclusionary housing agreement as a condition of approval of that map. So between 10% and 15% of the lots here, and we know there are 72, so 10% is seven, in between 10% and 15% is eight. Eight units will be deemed affordable. Now, these are moderate affordability, and we will get into that later in the presentation. But again, this is a code requirement. This was basically a city law that was enacted by a prior council to require the affordable. Couple of, oh, the last one. The California Environmental Quality Act, commonly known as SEQA, also requires that projects are analyzed for their impacts that they may have on the environment. We went through the process. As we are the lead agency and responsible for the environmental, typically, you do an initial study to denote which factors may be significant or not. Then you determine what level of analysis needs to be done. And so the level of analysis that was done on this is a mitigated negative declaration. So it, in effect, says there will be no significant impacts to the environment with mitigation. As part of that document, the lengthy document in your nearly 1,100-page packet today, the document essentially says that with the mitigation, and primarily on noise, so the sound wall and upgraded windows and doors, that there are no environmental impacts, significant environmental impacts. You also adopt as part of this process, if approved, a mitigation monitoring program, which is an implementation plan of the mitigation measures in the mitigated neg deck. That's a lot of mitigations. So I mentioned briefly, but the potentially significant issues are cultural, both historical and archaeological, soil, geological, paleontological, almost said that right, hazardous materials, emergency response, and then the noise, as I mentioned, the sound wall and the windows and doors. Again, none with significant impacts with the mitigation. So that is your list of entitlements before you tonight. A brief project overview. The project applicant before you is Florsheim Homes. Florsheim is a family-owned residential developer out of Stockton. They have contracted with the Murphy family, who currently owns the property, and they are local, they're from Escalon, owns the property and have for about 20 years. So if approved, they would complete the purchase and ultimately develop the property. This, you all recognize, is a Google map. The red dotted line is the city boundary. The red dot is the location, and you can see a carve-out of the city boundary around the project location. If approved, that red dot would go straight up Brennan, incorporating that area into the city. As was mentioned prior, this is the city's general plan. This looks into the future on what the land uses should look like as development occurs. In essence, you have general plans, land uses, zoning, to ensure compatible uses next to each other. And so a city will look out and say, one, you know, what do we need in our community? How can we, you know, drive revenue for services? But what are compatible uses? And so since 2005, updated in 2010, and updated in 2019, the property has been designated low-density residential, again, consistent with the application before you. It's also consistent with the development standards. There are minimum 6,000-square-foot lots and 7,000-square-foot at the corners. The project proponent is proposing north of that. The density required for the low-density residential is between 2 and 6 units per net acre. The proposed density is 5.3 units per net acre. And then also the provision of the park, as was mentioned, and we'll get into that more because there's some specific details about the park. But they are providing the adequate park space for the level, the number of homes. We have a calculation that we do that is directly from the general plan, and it tells us exactly how much park acreage needs to be provided. Specifically, it's 1.095 acres. This is a map, and I'll skip some of these slides and maybe go back to them if needed, but this is how the land stands now, two parcels totaling the nearly 18 acres. And you can see the residential subdivision to the south with the two stub streets into this development. So we'll spend a little time talking about the park. This would be an expansion of the existing Shadowwood Park, and you can see that primarily here, the darker green is what would be provided through the new development, the lighter green is the existing park. If I have, I don't know if, if you take a line directly south from there, basically, there was another addition prior, this little piece of park. The little piece of park was there first, and then Shadowwood actually added park, which is now the Shadowwood. So there's precedent in these types of parks as residential development continues to grow. So this section was first, and then Shadowwood added. This project, the Murphy Ranch, what's called the Murphy Ranch Project, would add another nearly 1.1 acres to the park. So you know that this park is a basin, and it has a berm on the north side as part of the development. That berm would be knocked down, the park would be expanded, and a new berm would be implemented there to retain its use as a park basin. And then we'll just talk about some of the features in this park. So we do, are proposing on the right-hand side, a half-court basketball with, you know, an upgraded adjustable hoop, and it will be striped for two pickleball courts. These are things being provided as part of the development. On the left side, you will see a restroom. It is a one-stall restroom that is being provided as part of this park, as well as a picnic area with some benches and a covered gazebo. So all of this is being developed in the north side of the park and will be funded by either the Landscape and Lighting District or the Community Facilities District. A Communities Facilities District acts just like a Landscape and Lighting District, which we have five of in the city, but is enhanced, and it can actually provide funding for services, not just physical things like, well, lighting's not physical, but not tangible things like lighting and landscaping, can actually provide services for police, libraries, city facilities, like community centers, city halls, that type of thing. So either on this project, a Community Facilities District or a Landscape and Lighting District will be established for the long-term maintenance of this park, like we've seen in other parks. We've also incorporated sort of a continuous sidewalk around the entire park. There was sidewalk in California, there was stretches, of course, on Edgewood, and so this park will install kind of a looped sidewalk around the entire park area. Just so it's clear, Communities Facilities District is also referred to as a miller roost sometimes, and again, basically, it's the long-term funding source to ensure parks are maintained as close as possible to the state when they were originally developed, and that is really the intent of those. I'll say it this way, we don't expect, and it will not happen, that the cost of the Belatera LLD south will be affected in any way by the development of this park expansion or the creation of the new subdivision. That park rates and fees and all of that, that are a big part of the LLD, will not change with the development of this park. Another matter we will spend some time on is traffic and circulation. This is a zoom dim map of the circulation plan in the city's general plan, and not super easy to read, and maybe especially on this scale, but you will see that the thicker dark lines, the arterials, Brennan, 120, McHenry, those are your arterials. Those really get you to the places you want to be, and they're the kind of origin or they're the destination roads. And you will see there's collectors, so those are the dotted lines. First Street is a collector. I don't know if that's Oklahoma or Irwin, but one of those is a collector, and then you have minor collectors. So California is considered a minor collector. It basically takes trips from residential-type uses, schools, shopping centers if there are, residential units for sure, and gets them out to the larger classifications of roadways. I'll just read from the general plan. "Is to be used to provide connectivity within neighborhoods and provide access to traffic-generating land uses such as home circles and recreation areas." And then we talked about California is connected on both sides to arterials, McHenry on the east and Brennan on the west. We've also, lot of talk through the public input process, which generally occurred between November 2024 and March 2025. Lot of talk about potential safety and congestion at the Brennan and 120 intersection. In April 2025, Caltrans, the California State Department of Transportation, so they are responsible for transportation planning and implementation throughout the state, did provide a letter to the city, and it is attached to your agenda package as Exhibit 8, indicating that they have approved and will fund an intersection improvement at Brennan and 120. They have recently initiated the process to plan, design, and perform the required environmental analysis associated with this construction project. And typical timeframes, we're not suggesting this one will hit this mark, typical timeframes at this stage for this type of project is three to four years. So there's the project initiation process document, which they are undertaking right now, it's called a PID, usually takes 12 to 18 months. That's really establishing rough costs, scope of the project, extent of the project, timeframes, that type of thing. And then once they have that, then they'll go into P A and E D, is what it's called, and it's basically preliminary design and environmental. That'll take another 12 to 18 months, and then you get into full design and then construction. So again, a typical timeframe is somewhere between three and four years when a project is at this stage. But again, the letter from April 2025 indicates that they've approved this as a project, and they are moving forward with that.
May I interrupt?
Sure.
Sir, if you can hold on with your question until after the presentation? Thank you.
This is a copy of that letter, and again, is in your packet as Exhibit 8. Caltrans has suggested, until such time as the project, their project, is implemented, that there are, you know, kind of interim mitigation measures or meantime mitigation measures, and we've provided a couple examples here. So basically, warning, not only Brennan traffic, that there's a stop So basically, warning, not only Brennan traffic, that there's a stop there, not to stop on tracks, you know, enhancing the signage and striping, but also on 120 to indicate that there is an intersection coming up, and for those travelers who may be coming at a higher rate of speed, to be aware, to slow down and be aware that there's an intersection coming. And so this is again, part of the conditions of approval as outlined by Caltrans. The applicant performed a traffic analysis, and you can see that the existing average daily trips in that kind of second column on California are somewhere between 600 and 750. Those will increase to almost 1,000 and a little over 1,100 with this project. And then Brennan will increase to a little north of 1,500 or close to 1,680. The City of Escalon's general plan includes a goal of maintaining a roadway level of service. So it's basically, you know, how long you have to wait, right? A level of service of D, so it's like your grades in school, A being the best, F being the worst. So the general plan includes a goal of maintaining a level of service D or better. Frankly, you don't want too high of a level of service. That means you've overbuilt your roads, and there's not enough traffic. You want some level of, I don't know, you know, a medium LOS there. So with the project, the traffic analysis says that the level of service D will remain. Also, should be noted, let's see here. Yeah, the level of service will remain. And then the other piece we wanted to mention is, in the municipal code, Section 16 requires access routes from residential subdivisions to collectors or arterial streets be designed to encourage vehicle speeds of less than 25 miles per hour, which will be here, and traffic volumes of less than 4,000 ADT. And so our municipal code calls for collectors to carry volumes less than 4,000 ADT, and you can see the numbers here with the project. Another key element of this project, and we touched on, is the affordable housing. In 2005, the Escalon City Council adopted what is called the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance to require that all new residential developments provide between 10% and 15% affordable housing units. This project is proposing eight. The developer has opted to provide moderate income units. So these are units for people who make between 80% and 120% of the area median income. And you can see here on the table what the median income is. This is as of 2025. So for a single individual, 73,200, on up to a family of eight, and what the moderate income level, how much a person would make to afford one of these eight units within this subdivision, if approved. Also, lot of colors on this. What we are primarily showing you here is the green. If you can tell, the green are the proposed affordable units. You can see they are not concentrated, they are spread throughout the subdivision. So a couple of, couple of the questions that weren't, that were asked through the process, the two community meetings that were held, the developer-hosted community workshop in November 2024, as well as the city-hosted Joint City Council Planning Commission Workshop hosted in March of this year. So a couple of questions that were asked at that time that were not specifically referenced in kind of the bulk of the staff report, we will touch on now. There was a question on whether an entrance and exit could be developed onto Brennan, so directly onto Brennan. As you know, this subdivision with the two stub streets that have been there for a number of years now, it appears the original intent was to access this property, this development, through Salivo and Riesling. But a question was asked at that time, can an exit be made directly onto Brennan? As we look and as our traffic engineer and city engineer looked at this, there are some concerns with the potentially backing up at the Brennan 120 intersection with the railroad exacerbating that. So it will back up a little bit. Any new ingress egress point could cause obstacles, problems, if queuing backs up on Brennan to south of that point. And so typically, you will have intersection spacing. So you don't have too many intersections by larger intersections, so that you don't have those conflict points and those obstructions. California is about the right distance from this type of intersection, and so anything north of that could pose some problems. So that was our, our analysis and our recommendation. City code indicates that two-story homes are not allowed behind existing homes. This is actually, it is true. At one point, the developer was proposing potentially two-story homes up against those homes that would be north of California. They have since gone away from that proposal and are only proposing one-story homes along the southern boundary of this property. So they are no longer proposing it, but we wanted to address it since it was specifically a question. Now, maybe it should be mentioned. Originally planned that way because planned developments can allow for deviations from the code. They allow for a little more flexibility. But again, based on some of the input, the developer has chosen to not propose. So one-story homes will be along the southern edge. Another question about the school district and their ability to handle the number of kids to be generated from this development. The school's district's own numbers, they estimated 51 children would be generated from this project across three different schools. They have informed us that they are able to accommodate that level of students at their facilities, at their existing facilities, and do not have asked with that number. And then the last two more. Can the wastewater treatment plant accommodate the new project? So the city has an older wastewater treatment plant on the domestic side, which is what we're talking about here. On the domestic side, we're at about 55% capacity. And so yes, this plant can accommodate the growth proposed here. The city is also working on the lines that take the effluent to the plant. There's three phases of the project. We've completed two phases, and the third phase is in the works. So we do not foresee an issue in conveying or accommodating the wastewater flows as part of this development. And the last one, has the city's sewer annexation moratorium been lifted? No, it has not, however, and this sewer moratorium was enacted in 08. So after the general plan in 05, and around the time of the crash, the sewer moratorium was enacted by council ordinance, of course, and essentially said, no new annexations until such time as the sewer situation, primarily the pipelines, are fixed. However, 12 years later, in 2020, via Resolution 04-20, which is on your screen here, the Escalon City Council directed staff to process the two pending annexation applications, and also, so process these two, the Murphy Ranch or the Carr property at that time, as well as the Seren Lutheran Church, and continue the suspension of acceptance of all new annexation applications. So special carve-out in 2020 to actively seek or accept the annexation applications for the Carr property, which is now the Murphy Ranch Project, as well as Seren Lutheran So with that, we are happy to answer any questions that the commission may have before we go out to the public hearing.
Do we have questions?
I don't think so, not at the moment. I just had one question. I think I saw it correctly, but I couldn't quite tell coloring-wise. On the general plan map, boundary map, yeah, is that, the project is within the 2015 growth boundary expectation, is that correct?
That is correct.
So this was one of the first properties that we kind of expected to take into the city as it grew.
Yeah, through our process and through the LAFCO process, they want you to identify 10, 20, and 30-year growth boundaries. So remember, this was done in 2005. And so yes, the 2015 boundary was that first 10 years, and yes, this is within the, that
Have a question. You mentioned the south portion of the subdivision, there would not be any two-story homes. What about the easterly?
Single story as well.
Just a single story as well.
Okay.
Those are single-story as well.
Okay.
Yes, both the south and the easterly, which are abutting existing homes, are single-story.
I have some rather picky questions. One of the things, on page 161, we see that the developers' portion of the intersection improvements, which are estimated to be somewhere between 5 and 7.5 million or 7.4 million dollars, comes out to 143,000, 6.5% of the project. But my calculator has it substantially higher, so obviously I'm missing something. So how did we come up with 143,000 as opposed to 487,000, for instance?
Yeah, good question. So the way that that reads is, the project, all-new development is responsible for about 23% of the intersection, which means that our development impact fee study acknowledged that there's existing deficiencies to a tune of about 77%. This developer, due to the proximity, would have an additional share, about 6.5%, on top of the regular development impact fee. The calculate, the calculus changed a little bit when Caltrans indicated that they would move forward and fund the project. And so there's a, I don't want to call it hedging of bets, but the way the condition reads is if Caltrans doesn't materialize, you know, the project doesn't materialize in some manner, that the project would pay its fair share, not only its development impact fee, but its additional share of the original project. So we have documents that we base our costs on, and those are older documents. They had a lower cost. Caltrans knew, recently had a different cost, a newer, updated cost. So it's a little bit of our process versus the Caltrans process. If the commission so chooses, we can definitely amend that condition or that kind of dynamic provision.
But this is on top of their normal impact fee that they're already paying for streets or intersections?
Yeah, if we, if it's determined that Caltrans is not going to fund the project, which we believe they will at this point. And so we need to figure out exactly how to do that. Do we collect the fee and then hold it until such time as, you know, they've developed or five years after development or 10, you know? We don't quite know the mechanism of how to do that. But if Caltrans is fully funded, there'll be no responsibility of all development in the City of Escalon for that intersection because it's now Caltrans' responsibility. So there's a change dynamic with Caltrans recently, relatively recently, saying they would fund the project.
I have kind of a related question pertaining to that intersection. I noticed to the west, it looks like plans for commercial eventually being annexed in. Is there any consideration to widening Brennan? Because right now, it kind of fishtails a little bit, like Farinelli goes to the west where everything south of First is more set back to the east. And I'm just like guessing a little bit, but it seems like with all of the improvements potentially to that intersection, it might be a good idea to add a turn lane or something to that effect. I don't know if the city's given any consideration to how they would go about acquiring the setback there?
Yeah, yeah. So in the Caltrans process, and they will be the lead agency on this project, they will determine what is the right traffic control. Is it a signal? Is it a roundabout? Is it something else? But probably one of those two. And then they will determine how much right-of-way is needed to make that improvement. And as they go through that process, if there's any right-of-way land basically to be acquired, they would acquire it as part of the development project, the construction project. So if it, you know, needed to be adjusted north or whatever that is, right-of-way acquisition is part of the development.
Another question. We predicate improvements on certain permit numbers, like the 37th permit on page 161. You know, we allow people to proceed after this, conditions are met. How, how did we come up with these benchmarks? I mean, I'm looking at it and thinking, you know, the number is 361, I believe, is the, is the traffic increases on most of our roads, the three major roads. And after the 37th house is built, you're, you've got basically 180 of those trips already in place. So how did we reach 37th permit as a benchmark?
There's no specific science to it. And again, this is a condition of approval and can be adjusted if needed, but city, you know, you're not going to have all the impacts at the first development. You are certainly going to have more at the end.
Right.
So, you know, essentially picked a midpoint, which seemed appropriate for the city, and I don't want to say fair for the developer, but, you know, appropriate to move certain improvements forward at a certain time.
Just wondered if there was a science to it that I have not been able to find.
I have several questions about traffic, but I'm going to hold on to those until we proceed. Are there any other questions from the commission?
No, no.
No, this time.
With that, I would like to open this hearing to the public. Again, please remember, if you could limit your comments to five minutes, and if you hear something that you had intended to say, just tell us you agree, and then we'll, we'll move along. Thank you.
Good evening. Can we, can we invite the applicant up?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Do you mind waiting? I apologize.
Thank you, Chairman Dunbar, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Dave Romano. I'm here on behalf of Florisheim Homes. It's a pleasure to be before you this evening. I will make I will make my comments brief. You have received a very thorough staff report that covered a number of these issues. I think what's important for the commission to know is I have with me this evening Randy Bling. He is the president of Florsime Homes. I have John Pranitis. He is the planning and construction manager. The property owners are in attendance. I have Travis Brooks from Miller Star, who prepared the development agreement and the inclusionary housing documents with your city. Charlie Simpson with Insight Environmental, who prepared the initial study and mitigated negative declaration. And Carly Hoyt from Farr and Peers is available online. So if we have questions related to any of those items, initial study, mitigation measures, anything that you need to ask us, we should have somebody here to answer that question for you. I think we just prefer to wait until you take all of the public testimony, and then the commission will know what questions are important to you, and then we can bring up the right people from the development team. So I just want to let you know that we're all here. We really appreciate staff's hard work in getting us to this point. It's been a while coming. As they've mentioned to you, this is in your general plan. This is in your sphere of influence. It is in your housing element. It is consistent with all of those documents that you, as a planning commission, review and opine on. It is adjacent to an existing subdivision. Salivo Way and Risling Way have actually been stubbed into this site. They were planned, your forbears planned for this property to develop and to access those. It's a 72 lot, low-density, single-family subdivision with a one-acre park. The site has not been commercially farmed for probably 25-plus years. And so we've continued to work with your staff. We, on the applicant team, held a community meeting in November of 2024. We invited our neighbors to that meeting, and we held that over at the community center. After that, your staff held a meeting here in March that was a workshop. And so the public has had an opportunity to comment to us, to comment to your staff. And we've done the best that we can to respond to those comments. We can't always address each and every concern that's brought up to us, but we certainly do our level best to answer every one. The existing Shadowwood Park will be expanded with this project. It's important to know that all of the new park areas will be placed in a new community facilities district, a CFD or some kind of a landscape lighting and maintenance district, so that we don't create a burden or additional cost on existing residents in the other LLMDs. That's been a major concern. That's been brought up a number of times, and your staff made sure in their negotiations with us that we did not bring that impact onto adjacent property owners. We also heard concerns from people that live south of the project, really who brought it up, about having two-story homes next to their homes. And, and we're allowed to put a two-story home next to a two-story home, but because there are angles and sometimes it's difficult to determine where is appropriate, ultimately the developer decided, let's just make them one-story homes. The entire southern boundary will be one-story homes, and then we did go ahead and turn that along the eastern side. And so really, anywhere this project is adjacent to an existing home, whether it be a one-story home or a two-story home, it will have a one-story home next to it. So we don't have that concern of people in second stories being able to look into backyards. So we were able to accomplish that. One thing that hasn't been mentioned was that throughout this process, staff asked us if we could take that block wall on the north side of the project, adjacent to the railroad tracks, and move it a couple more feet south so we can have landscaping outside of that wall. So we'll be able to put some irrigation and some vining on the outside of that wall. So as you're traveling up and down Highway 120 and you look at that wall, it will be something that has a nice appearance to the traveling public. So we've been able to incorporate that. Your staff's done a really good job talking about the traffic issues. California Avenue is a minor collector. The traffic ultimately on that road is substantially below what it's designed for, about a quarter of that traffic. We understand that if you live on a road and something's developing and there's more traffic, that is an area of concern. But ultimately, the city decides what roads have what levels and how we use those roads and how we move traffic around. Caltrans has approved the safety improvement project, and the project developer has agreed to construct all of the improvements that Caltrans feels are important to be instructed, in advance of that ultimate Brennan, Highway 120 intersection being, being completed. So with that, I'm not going to dwell on those issues anymore. I'm looking forward to hearing kind of some of the public comment, and then we, as a team, will be more than happy to come up as needed, as asked, to respond to those issues. We thank Caltrans for their hard work. We thank your staff for their hard work. We're excited to be at this point of the project. And certainly, we ask that you make a recommendation of approval of this project to the city council. We think it will be a benefit to your community. And, and you have planned for this, and your council has included this in their general plan, in their housing element. And interestingly, about 90% of this site is actually adjacent to the existing city limits. If you look at it on a map, it's like a little peninsula that was kind of left there. So we think it's logical and orderly, and LAFCO will be excited to bring it into the city as well. So those are my comments. I'm happy to answer any questions. If you have immediate questions, otherwise, we'll be available after the testimony to respond. I did have a three-slide PowerPoint that I didn't go through, but it was basically, you know where the site is, there's the subdivision map, and then ultimately, you've seen this map too, which is kind of shows you where those south and east sides are. So I'll give this back to you, Diana, and we appreciate your time. Thank you, Chairman.
I think we have a question.
Sure.
Well, even though you're complying with the municipal code about not putting two-story houses next to one-story houses that are already existing, you're still building two-story houses inside that are going to be next to one-story houses?
No, yes, inside.
Is there any mitigation there?
There will be two-story. No, generally speaking, I will let your city manager and your planners speak to that. In new subdivisions, almost anywhere that I've worked, the one-story, two-story rule is adjacent to existing neighborhoods. So people that have lived somewhere for a while don't all of a sudden have a two-story adjacent to them. But internal to the subdivision, people will know, and it will be a mix of one stories and two stories. And I don't believe that your city code has any thing that would limit that or would...
No, just asking if there's any mitigation that you're going to supply. I know there are people in Farinelli, one-story homes next to two-story homes, and they're not contented with the way things are.
Yeah, they would be consistent with those elevations that are in the packet that show the homes, so they would have, you know, windows consistent with what's there. In fact, it's kind of laid out in the subdivision where the ones are and the twos are, but there will be ones and twos internal to the subdivision, but not adjacent to existing homes.
Are there any RV driveways?
Pardon me?
Are there any RV driveways?
Adjacent to houses? I don't believe so.
No.
And if I misspeak, when I'm sitting in the back, I will come back afterwards and tell you I misspoke. But, but no, I don't, those aren't in there.
Just a couple of comments.
Sure.
We have another subdivision in town, roughly 50 homes, and there's one point of ingress and egress. So to me, having 72 homes with two points of ingress and egress seems adequate. And I, too bad the fire department left, but I think you would have heard if that was not adequate.
That's, yeah, that's very typical, as long as you have two ways in and out. And so you can, you can take, you know, 30-ish slots or whatever half of that would be and spread them in and out. And really, the two ingress and egress is so that while a rarity, if something happens and there's an emergency at one of those access points, and you have another emergency at the same time, they actually have a second way in and out. So it's more for, you know, two emergencies at once, or an accident, or the road's blocked for some reason than it is for circulating the traffic, but...
This might be for one of your engineering staff members. What's the mitigation for lead paint? The age of this home or the home on the property has lead paint, and then also maybe asbestos? I don't know if they specified friable or non-friable, but what's the, what's the mitigation for that?
Somebody much smarter than me. I will try. I know that when we take down homes over a certain age, they usually have somebody come out, they walk in them and they check, they see if there's any asbestos in there. If there is, they have a certain method that they have to take it down so that they keep it kind of under control. I'm not sure on the lead paint side, but if you still have that question at the end, I know our consultant is here who did the environmental work, might be able to give you more detail.
And I'm wondering, we've got a growth management ordinance of 75 permits a year. What do you see as far as seeking your permits? How many and at what rate?
That I'll have to ask, but with 72 units, I know, well, it's...
I...
If you did 25 or 30 a year, I mean, honestly, if, you know, if you did that in a couple of years, I think that would be considered kind of a booming success out there, so...
I feel a certain loyalty to infill development in town, so... And I wanted to comment, just, I walk through Farinelli and other areas, and I'm forever seeing tree roots buckling the sidewalk. So to read that you have, will be putting root barriers on your trees, I was very glad to see that. It won't eliminate it entirely, but it'll help counter it.
It's a lesson we've learned from 50 and 75 and 100 years ago about the way we did things and what we ended up dealing with in the future, so we understand that.
I have one question. Is this development going to be phased? Are you going to finish all 72 lots and one fell swoop?
I'll get you an answer. It's not that big of a subdivision, so my guess would be that they will build all of the improvements at one time. If I'm wrong, I will correct that, but, but that would be my expectation.
Thank you for waiting.
Again, Curtis Russell, 1419 Alberto Lane. Some of you folks have known me, I've just city council in the past about some of these issues. So I sent Jalen an email last week. He answered my email, and I'm satisfied, satisfied with most of the answers. I came up yesterday to get an agenda, and one of the kind ladies at the counter came out with this big stack of, and said, do you want me to print this? No, it's not necessary to print, it's in PDF. But anyhow, very kind, everyone's always so helpful. I, some of my constituents will probably want to talk about other things. I just want to drive home the point about the safety. Again, my backyard have the wall separating me on the backside is Brennan. And just want to point out that with the increased traffic, not only are we talking about the increased traffic from the subdivision, there's so many people now, and you know that we have the truck traffic coming from the cannery that's using Old Ray coming in, a lot of us older people that are retired, we don't even leave our neighborhood till midday because traffic's so bad. And then we exit out of California, go south on Brennan to go to Old Ray, from one to Modesto to go to McHenry. Well, as you well know, we're talking about the Riverwalk subdivision going in at some point, 900 houses. If any of those folks are going to Manteca, there's going to be a big percentage of them that are either going to go south to 99, go that way, or those that are closer, because it is much closer, are going to sneak through probably on Old Ray to get to, come down to Brennan to get on 120. So that's, that's, that's my concern, is that I know that Caltrans says they're doing the studies. What I understand, part of their studies was they picked two optimum days, was midday on a Wednesday and a Thursday to do their studies. How they're doing that without the rubber counters in the road now, I have no ideas. It's just some formula, they pick out people that are going to Sparbuck's. I don't know the answer to that. I'm not quite satisfied with it, but anyhow, going forward, I just hope that the planning commission would do, do diligence in making sure that, that those concerns for widening that intersection, whatever has to be done, whether it's signal or whatever, is going to be addressed and that addressed, that we're all satisfied that those safety concerns are going to be taken into effect before this project is complete, for sure. And, and I appeal to you, as you well, well, you know, very well know, you actually have another subdivision in Oakdale that's going to have 300 houses as well. And we know there's going to be a percentage of those traveling 120 as well. Anyhow, I, so the safety is very important to me, but I actually lost a, my son to a fatality on 120 near Beeler. Wasn't directly related to the intersection, but it's, we don't realize when, whether it's one accident, one fatality, two fatalities, whatever it is, how much that affects so many outreach and people, not just individual families, but it, there's a far expanding reaches that as well. So that's my concern. I appreciate you taking that all into consideration.
Thank you.
My name's Vance Nielsen. I live on 412 Nonnie Avenue. Couple things is traffic. Anybody, since the bridge has been done down there in the river, traffic is, on McHenry, has increased enormously. Traffic on 120 has increased enormously. Brennan traffic has increased enormously up to Uli. You get truck, you're getting people trying to bypass Escalon and just going like hell. The traffic is just terrible. What about speed bumps? I mean, who do you need to know about speed bumps? Even where I live, people just don't know what 25 is. You know? I know there's speed bumps in the older part of Escalon that are just new, nice speed bumps. So I'd like to see more of that, even in these residential areas. And then traffic study. When was the last time a traffic study? I understand it's been over 10 years. Back in 1999, 2000, we were told that there was going to be a signal there on 120 and And there still isn't. So Caltrans studies, you can take that for what it's worth. Like Vance said, they take these studies on Wednesdays and Thursdays? Come on. What Fridays? When I lived in Manteca, you could get across Yosemite Avenue on a Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, there was one signal in town, and you had to go all the way up there to get across town. And then as far as, and you know, who's going to clean the bathroom? You know, it's nice to have, but who's going to take care of it? And as far as the, having root containers? My subdivision had root containers. And you see what that did, you know? And then who's doing the inspections on this stuff? The inspector we had in 99, she didn't know nothing. I'm a licensed commercial electrician, and she didn't know that you can't put an incandescent light up on a wall without a box. I brought that to her attention because I found out my house was that way, and she sent a letter to the, or got ahold of the contractor and said, would you show Mr. Nielsen where it's permitted in the code book? I never heard nothing. And you couldn't talk to her except through the intercom, you know? And Public Works? I mean, on California, I know of three or four leaks that have been dug up by the city and had to be repaired for water. I mean, you can see the big square holes, and it's city. So again, who's doing the inspections? You know, who's going to do these inspections? Are we going to have a permanent inspector for this? And how good are they? They're going to be a combination inspector? But then they need to be sharp. And who's going to do the Public Works inspections? You know? And the curbs? My house, I mean, all those houses there, the entrance to the driveways were off... My house, I mean, all those houses there, the entrance to the driveways were offset because they didn't know how to figure out where the driveway's going to do when they poured the curb and gutter. And when I made a stink about it, come down, they said, "Oh, we'll give you a permit." I said, "Are you kidding me? Curb and gutter is the most expensive concrete there is." You know? And then they finally, you know, finally got somebody to, they came out and fixed it, did a half job.
Are there any other concerns about this specific development that you have?
Well, I just want to make sure it's done right.
Okay.
And inspected.
We do have, we do have people working for the city to do that.
And the superintendent we had was a drunk, so. I mean, the city just.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Kevin Creamer. I live at 1373 Edgewood Avenue. My house is number six. You're going to do a sound wall all the way up to number five. I don't understand why you guys don't go all the way down to 120. I have eight palm trees that are 30 feet tall, been there for 20 years. You guys start doing construction, I'm afraid if you mislead something, they might fall. So you're going to have the park coming all the way out. And I'm on the east side, you know, at the back wall right there. And I'm afraid that, and you put the sound wall all the way across and you're going to put the sound wall all the way to 120 down to the left, it's going to look nice, you know? We want our city to look nice, you know? And that's what I'm here for. And, you know, anything, those, my palm trees are very big. And I'm afraid if something goes wrong with the construction, it might fall. But if we have a sound wall there, it's going to stop it. And you're going from the park down to the fifth house, there's only one more house. That's my house. You know? Why not do it all the way down, you know, to 120? Yeah.
You've got the pie-shaped lot there?
Excuse me?
You've got the pie-shaped lot that borders the railroad tracks and the?
No, that, he's on, he's on Northwood. He's, that's Northwood.
You're the next one down?
I'm now, I'm right next to it.
Okay.
Yeah, on 1373 Edgewood. You got eight palm trees there and they're 30 feet tall, you can't miss it. When you come into town, I think this gentleman right now, he knows where he is. And back to Brennan right there, my neighbor died last year. She pulled out and she got hit head-on and she died. And I talked to all the family and everything. And that needs a stop sign or roundabout or something right there. And my other neighbor got hit there too. I've been there 10 years. That's a bad place. And you're going to put all these houses there? You're going to have to put a light there or you're going to put something there, you know? Because there's going to be too much traffic. But I'm more worried about the sound wall, you know? Why not do it all the way, all the way down?
I believe you filed a letter with the city on this issue?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then we, I read the letter, yeah.
That's all I got to say.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I'm Scott. I live on Farinelli. And I agree with these people about the traffic involved there. I noticed that you also have more trucks coming in to the north of us on Brennan, well, not on Brennan, but on 120 because of the new industry over there. And that has to be accounted for. As far as the improvements coming supposedly from Caltrans, hopefully putting in a light and not a roundabout, then there shouldn't be any problem with the road coming from the new development onto Brennan. And I noticed that nothing was said about a thruway from Riesling that was brought up in the last meeting. And so we haven't heard anything about that. Now, as far as the park, I noticed the park, two-thirds of it is in the LLD of Baratell, of the LLD I belong to. And also California, we just had the streets resurfaced there. And I'm sure our LLD paid for that. And everything's going to be coming out onto California and that's going to be tearing up the roads more and probably turning it into something that looks like Floyd or Rumble in Modesto where it's going to be just overcrowded and really tear down the neighborhood with traffic being able to come out on Brennan. And also, Riesling would alleviate that and also make it easier for our new neighbors to get around and a better safety system for these people. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Good evening. J.D. Heightower, Executive Officer of San Joaquin, LaFco. I was here just to answer any questions you may have about the annexation process. Generally, we reviewed the project and in general agreement with the city on, it would make a logical boundary along Brennan Avenue and provides a logical extension of services for the city of Uskwang. If you have any questions, feel free.
Is this, was this on the, didn't you used to work with the city?
Yes, sir.
That's what I thought. Was this on the plan back then?
Yes, sir. That was why those streets were stubbed. Riesling and the other street were stubbed up there to provide circulation and to utilize California as the access to Brennan Avenue, much like how the plan is laid out.
The county also has it designated as low-density residential, correct, for future?
Well, it's urban reserve, but right now it's agriculture, but it's really not viable agricultural land. That's part of our mission for LaFco is the preservation of agricultural land. But in this case, it's really not viable agricultural land because of the proximity of 120 and existing residential on, to the east and to the south. And so you really can't do any, you know, viable commercial farming on the land. And being an urban reserve with the county is, makes logical sense to go ahead and although it's, you know, prime land, we really don't want to do that, but in this case, it makes sense to go ahead and develop that parcel, those two parcels.
I'm John Hall. I live at 419 California Street. And this is in no way an indictment of Escalon PD, but we have a severe problem with existing traffic laws being enforced in this city. I'm sure you're all familiar with AB 413, the daylighting law, not supposed to park within 20 feet of marked or unmarked crosswalk. And I see that routinely in this town, especially in front of El Portao during pickup and drop-off. I see kids darting out on California Street. You guys put the radar trailers there? I've watched the FedEx trucks hit 45 miles an hour before they get to Brennan. And you're going to be adding all of these other vehicles coming out onto California Street with people who are treated like a racetrack. So we need better traffic control. We need better enforcement of existing laws.
Good evening, Council. My name's Natalie Gallegos and I've submitted a letter that you guys probably or should already have. So I've pointed out a lot of details. I did go through the document that was uploaded, 1,083 pages. So I won't dwell too much on that. You've got those details in my letter. I live on California Street. I'm an original owner in the Farinelli subdivision. And my house backs up to this property. When we first moved in there, I actually spoke to a family member of the car, Rio Carr, who was the executor of wrecks in Muriel's estate. And he told me and a lot of the other neighbors that were moving in at the time that this was going to be a really nice thing to develop. They're going to put senior housing in there, single-story gated community. It's going to be really nice. We were told that by the city at the time. We were told that by our developer. Rio told me they were putting CCNRs in place when they transferred the property. I've looked, they're not there. It's probably a handshake, just because that was the nature of Escalon back then. It's since been brought to my attention that in fact, in the archives, there were two plans submitted for exactly what I just said. And so we knew the stub outs were going to come onto California Street, but big difference between a deed-restricted 55 and older community than what they're putting in now or what they're proposing now. We're also under the impression that there was going to be other exits onto 120. Again, that was, you know, we bought these houses 20 some odd years ago. I'm from Manteca. Development wasn't happening south of one, the bypass, when I lived in Mantica. Now it's a whole city out there. So a lot has changed in 20 years. The development around us is crazy. So you're going to put these houses on top of an already fatal intersection. I understand that Caltrans has jumped on the bandwagon right now, but we don't have anything concrete from them. It's all just talk. There's nothing, you know, there's just preliminary stuff. Yet we're going to jump the gun and put a housing tract right on top of this. I think that's reckless. I mean, what, I wouldn't want that on my conscience if there's any more accidents or fatalities. I've had some of my guests getting an accident there. You know, we, community members have lost family members at that intersection. I think we need to rethink all of this, make sure we get the traffic under control. We need to get Caltrans signed, sealed, and delivered, that they're going to have a project going there before we approve anything else right here. It's just irresponsible to do any, to do any more development until we've got something concrete from Caltrans. A sure we'll look at it letter is what we've got. They haven't even done their own traffic study. The Florstein traffic study was conducted Tuesday through Thursdays, April 18th through June 1st. Those of us know that that's a real quiet time on the highway. I don't know what the reasoning is, I'm not an engineer, but I watch that traffic all day, all night. I've got a bird's eye view of it. I see the Walmart trucks pass by, Lowe's, we're the superhighway to feed the Sierras, to supply the Sierras. It's getting crowded. They're building a travel center at the intersection of Jackton and 120. There's going to be a large gas station with five restaurants. That's being proposed by the city of Mantica. It was in the Mantica Bulletin, September 9th. That's going to bring a lot, I mean, we're going to have a lot of traffic coming through our town. We need to get Caltrans here right now and get stuff in writing and get plans going now, funded on paper. Let's do it. Then let's revisit putting houses there and more businesses. But we've, you guys rejected Germatt Lyons apartment complex for much less traffic issues than what we've got going on. The ingress and egress with this development onto California Street is going to more than double the traffic down our street. That little quarter-mile section between Brennan and Riesling is probably a good 10 to 20 feet narrower than it is once you pass the park. You've got a lot of traffic dumping in that little section. Two cars can't safely pass by each other. If I've got company at my house, that's parked in front of my house and my neighbor across the street has company in front of her house, two cars can't safely pass by each other. It turns into a one-way street. I got it in five minutes. But anyhow, thank you.
Anyone else like to address the commission?
Thank you, Kirk Danzer, 389 Noni. I also wrote a letter to you all. I don't know that you've received it or read it. I hope you have. I'm just going to read a little bit of the beginning there so I formally let you know that I am protesting and oppose the annexation of the development of Murphy Ranch Housing Project prior to the completion of the signalization roundabout at the intersection of Brennan and 120. I echo what Natalie just said. It's just too dangerous to keep going. The traffic study that the city uses for this was conducted in '23. It was amended in '24. It did not include Weldway or any of the traffic here because we don't know what the traffic's going to be out of there. There's going to be many trucks. I think they said at the time in front of the planning committee, it'd be 99 employees or more, those 99 cars. So that wasn't included in what's going to hit that intersection. So now we have this other site here that's not part of the city. There is no fire. You don't need to approve this till we get that intersection completed. And whether it's completed or started, at least we're moving forward. And I don't, I don't think you guys want it on your conscience that Caltrans gives you some kind of little handshake with the city manager and never comes through with what they've promised. They've been balking at this project since 2007. And when I was on the planning commission in 2011, the city sent a group of representatives, two council people, the city manager, the city engineer, John Abrew, to District 10 in Sacramento. They got the runaround. Oh, we've got an acting manager here now. Down the road, they had acting managers for 10 years. Then it was, the city had three warrants. They met the warrants for that intersection there with deaths and traffic, et cetera. And they said, "Well, you know, we can't really approve that because if we put a signal here and there's an accident, people are coming after us." Hocus pocus, come on. Somebody runs a stop sign, they're responsible, not Caltrans. So Caltrans is not a responsible agency that we can rely on for that intersection. And because of that, whether you approve or you don't approve of this development isn't the point. Point is, we don't need to exacerbate that intersection any further, so we should hold off on any other development that's not in the city at this point from being approved. There are so many things I want to talk about, but I got it in five minutes. I want to go to what was brought up. One of the questions that I brought up at both town hall meetings did not show up in your question and answer deal was, "Why do we need Salivo? Why do we need to have Salivo?" They've already ruled out the driveway on Brennan. They've given you no reason for it. It's tangible in front of you. They just say, "Oh, the engineer thinks the cars are going to back up." They're going to back up anyway, whether they come around Salivo onto Brennan or right out at that spot. Why can't they come out there? That was one of the questions. My question was, why don't we do what we've done in other neighborhoods and take Riesling at California, run it across the railroad tracks, just like we do at Irwin and Walnut? And we have Brennan and Ulray. We've got California onto McHenry and we've got Jones over by the railroad tracks for Westwood Country, for those people to get out. If you run it across there, you take the pressure out of the existing If you run it across there, you take the pressure out of the existing neighborhoods. You put them over onto the 120. You take pressure off of Brennan and 120. And nobody's addressed that. And I have a feeling it's because, you know, that's a little bit more expensive than just coming out and hitting this neighborhood. There's more to be, but I'm not going to go into that. I want to address the LLMD. Can you put the map up? There it is. Okay, if you look at that, that map, it shows the Shadowwood Park and Storm Basin. They're going to open that. We pay for that. Bellaterra LLMD, 143 property owners pay almost $700 a year to maintain the LMD and the Bellaterra. That includes that park, the water, the electricity, the sprinkler system, the Farinelli Parkway, Brennan, all the streetlights. We pay for all that. Now they're going to open it up to this new neighborhood and that's, that's our basin. If they're going to become part of that, they should become part of our LLMD. I'm not saying that they, you know, they're not entitled to open that up, but that's our basin there. They're going to impact us. We're not being remunerated anywhere into this, in this project. They're not paying for Brennan. We paid for that strip out there in Brennan and all that landscaping. We need to reevaluate the LLMD for Bellaterra, the impact that this project is going to have on it. And really, instead of going for CFD, which I think is just, that's obnoxious. You know, they're going to pay for the library, they're going to pay for the police, they're already going to pay for it with their property taxes. We all do. But they should at least join our LMD because they're part of it now with Salivo and Riesling. They're exiting into our neighborhoods. They're part of us. And I suggested that in the beginning. They don't want to hear it. And I think you can make that a condition of approval on this project. Make them part of our LLMD if they do that. Don't approve the annexation until that intersection's done. And maybe that'll move them along a little faster. If the city manager's right, and I don't think he is, that Caltrans is going to have this thing in the bucket in a year and a half, two years, three years, let's hold off. Let's make them prove that. Let's see that work being done before we put more Escalonians sitting behind, you know, four or five-minute delays at Brennan, getting frustrated and running that intersection, causing those accidents. Thank you.
I just wanted to add that the two entrances, the Riesling and the other one, you know, that was in the works. But that was 25 years ago that they were figuring on traffic. You know, and Brennan. Brennan needs a big intersection. It needs a light. And it needs multiple lanes on Brennan. And I think all the way down Brennan needs to be upgraded. Thank you.
One thing I forgot to say was that I too lost a son-in-law there in that area there. And it really does need a light there. We do welcome new neighbors, but it should be done right and it should be safe.
Any additional comments from the audience? Are there any additional?
Jalen, I have a comment.
Okay. Online speaker, go ahead.
Additional comments? Any other?
We're having trouble, Speaker, hearing you.
Hello? Jalen, can you hear me?
No, we can't.
I can hear you. My time? Hello? Hello?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. I've listed all the testimony this evening. This is that, I'm going to have to agree with Mr. Danzinger. He's absolutely right. If this project does not get that light put in before it's built, I don't know when we'll get it put in.
I think we've lost you.
So I think, are you there?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. So I think we've got to be smart. We can't have any control over Caltrans once this thing is built. So it's better to get them to build their traffic light or whatever they're going to do there before. And that, I think, is the bottom line in this project. Other than that, I got no problems with any of it.
Is that all?
That's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alves.
You're welcome.
Are there any other speakers online waiting?
We do have.
Jalen, I am.
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Yeah, my name's Nick Aldaglio and I live at 409 Farinelli. And I, a lot of it, I don't want to repeat because it's already been said, but actually in their own application, Florsheim stated that the current level of service, the LOS for that intersection is at a level E, which is beyond what the city is acceptable. And by adding the subdivision, that level of service would go to F. So just wanted to bring that up. And I believe, Jalen said the engineers said that it would be an issue with stub out there onto Brennan from that subdivision. I've lived both in the Farinelli Park subdivision and in the Shadowwood subdivision on Edgewood. And Northwood actually exited out onto Walnut. And that's never been an issue as long as I've lived here and I've been in town about 30 some years now. And all those levels of service and the documentation they had didn't consider Weldway going in. And we all have seen the magnitude or the size of Weldway and what that's going to push out onto Brennan and 120 as well. And I don't want to be the broken record about Caltrans, but Caltrans can say yes, but their funding's dependent on their funding. And if they have to cut, this could obviously be a project they could cut and it'll never get built. And the intersection really needs to get fixed before this project goes in. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other people in the queue?
Does anybody else online wish to speak?
Yes, can you hear me? This is Roxana Schatz.
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
I have a couple concerns, and one is on Brennan Road. And if you notice, and this is where I'm confused, you have Vintage Estates and then you have the Farinelli subdivision. If you look at the Vintage Estates, that was a major collector street when that was done. And Mary Lamina had the setbacks much further than Farinelli has, his. So I don't know how you're going to go around that jog or how that's going to conform going out onto Highway 120. And that's something I would like someone to look at. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Keeps cutting off and on. And then the other concern that I have is on First Street. I live on the corner of Riesling and First, and it's right at the roundabout. But if you look at the curbs, we've had so many people hit that roundabout. They've gone through the roundabout, they've come up onto the curbs. There really needs to be some type of speed bumps. And I know that may not impact your subdivision that you're talking about, but I think it would impact a lot on First Street and when the subdivision goes in. And then the other thing is, we only have two stop signs on First Street, which is by, one is by the school and the other one, I believe, is by, is it, is it Oklahoma? I think it is. So we really need to get some speed control on First Street. I think the subdivision is really good. I think Florsheim's a good developer. I would much rather see homes go in there. That would be, you know, not just affordable homes, but maybe some upper-end homes. So I think it's a good developer. I would like to see them go in. I just, we just got to get this traffic thing down a little bit better for the egress and ingress and how that's going to affect Brennan and First Street in California. So thank you for your time. I hope you take a look at that.
Are there any other people in the queue that are waiting to speak?
Would anybody else online wish to speak?
Anyone else in the audience who would care to add anything? Any questions?
I have some questions. I have questions for like some of the expert people.
For the experts. Why don't we wait until we close the public portion before we do that?
Right.
Okay. And with that then, we will close the public portion of the hearing.
I had some project timeline questions if someone from your team can come up.
Florsheim?
Nominated?
I'll do my best. Yep, yep. And then can add to it if needed.
How long do you estimate to break ground on houses after the entitlement process, after the annexation, after putting in civil improvements? What does that timeline look like?
My best guess in what would be a typical process would be, we're just moving into winter, so it just started raining. Improvements, we have to go to Lafco, right? We have to get into the city. So at best case, site improvements would start in the spring or summer of next year. They would take a few months to get those done. And you would put model homes. Then you would start building homes. So the first time you would probably have a home occupied in this subdivision would be 2027. That would be occupying a home. The incremental steps are, you can build models when you're doing improvements. There's a lot of like substeps, but if you're just looking at when you could likely see people moving in, I think that would be kind of a best-case scenario. And then it's certainly market-based, right? So things are slowing down a little bit now, so they might slow down a little bit. If interest rates come down a point or two, things might, money becomes a little freer and things might hurry up a little bit. But I think that's kind of our best guess.
And then you estimated like two to three years for total build-out?
Yeah, I think that would be reasonable.
Any questions? Did you give any consideration to the, I know you've heard about it when you were here back in March, any consideration to the thought of pushing Riesling through to 120?
Yeah.
And what were the problems with that?
A couple. One is, anytime you cross a railroad track, you usually have to give back one, if not one, then two crossings, because we have to get permission from the railroad to do that. And it's, you hate to generalize, but it's almost an impossibility to get new crossings across railroad tracks are very, very difficult. The second thing, and the second kind of unintended consequence, is then you create kind of a raceway from 120 for people not only in this subdivision, but actually to come in and go all the way down through to use Riesling to go into all of the neighborhoods south of there too. So it's close to two existing intersections. Getting that crossing would be extremely difficult, if not impossible. And then we might actually introduce more cut-through traffic into the neighborhood. So as we looked at that and we looked at moving traffic around, it just didn't seem to be something that had maybe the benefits that some might perceive it to have.
How, how many projects have you, has Florsheim been involved in, or you? Because I know you, you get around. How many projects you've been involved in that have this kind of profile with next to a railroad, in close approximation to a state highway?
This specific profile, every project is different.
Of course.
And you are absolutely correct. I've done hundreds and Florsheim has done many throughout the Central Valley and up into Nevada. Next to railroads often. So we've done a lot of projects next to railroads. And in Modesto, there are a number of projects. And, you know, our railroads, the valley was built around railroads, right? So we deal with railroads all the time. We also deal with state highways all the time. So they're both very, very typical. A railroad next to a state highway, when Golden State Boulevard, Highway 99 was the highway and the railroad, we would see that more often. But as most of the towns have grown, they've kind of grown away from 99. And so, you know, there aren't railroads along 108 generally. There aren't railroads along a lot of these roads. So it's a little bit unique, but I think the issues aren't, make it a substantially complicated project. So I don't know if I quite answered your question.
No, I answered the question, but I asked.
I might be able to say four times.
Well, that's okay.
I can think of one right now.
Because I ask it to ask this question.
Sure.
How reliable has your experience, how reliable has Caltrans been in your experience in projects where there are issues, serious issues such as the one we have here?
Yeah. I, they're, they've, they've been reliable to deal with in getting to the end. As far as the timing is concerned, you know, sometimes it goes faster, sometimes it goes longer. There are issues that I can't really say, you know, if they set a deadline of this much time, they're going to be get there. But they will ultimately get there. And what I found interesting about this was it's not only this project, right? This project created a pressure relative to dealing with this issue. The community knows it's an issue. There's been a community pressure to deal with this issue. The subdivision knows it's an issue. There's been, so the subdivision has created some momentum. The development across the way that has been considered, all of these has created what I've seen as kind of a unique opportunity and motivation to really get Caltrans moving forward. And so it was very exciting that through that pressure, they ultimately stepped up and said, we understand we have an obligation here. We'll actually take this on. In most of the jurisdictions I work in, this would be on the developer to do the PID, to do the PA and ED, to do these kinds of studies. For Caltrans to step forward, I do find is a really positive step. So.
Florsheim, as we've heard, has a wonderful reputation, or good reputation. How hard are you going to push for this then?
We will.
Help us get a solution.
Yeah. I mean, certainly we will be pushing. It's important to the project. But my hope would be that your city engineer, your city manager, and your other folks, because in our business, the pace that we can make Caltrans move is how closely the city is hooked up with us. Caltrans reacts more to local jurisdictions than they do necessarily to developers, because we have a little bit of a habit of screaming, me, 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 now, 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 in the development community. But, so they hear that often. But when the cities come to them, they seem to be much more reactive to a city or a county dealing with public work. So the speed that this will go, it is important for the city to be a partner and to continue to communicate with Caltrans and to press them. And that's how this will ultimately get completed and benefit, you know, the entire community when it gets done.
There are a couple little anomalies in your traffic study. I noticed traffic dropped by half on one particular chart out of 22 columns. It was the only column that dropped, so I'm assuming that is a mistake. And I can't find my question where I had that written down. But, now here it is. It says there's going to be half as much traffic in the afternoons at 120 in Brennan with the project as there would be without it. So my assumption is that that's a mistake.
Yeah. And Carly Hoyt with Farron Peers, who prepared that study, is online, listening to this discussion.
Okay.
Will you have either a page site for her?
Page 844.
Clarify that. I'd ask Carly to do that.
That would be page 844. I think it's the sixth line down in the chart.
I'm sorry, can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm just trying to confirm, that's in the actual traffic study or is this in the staff report? report?
It's one of the charts that was provided to us. I believe that is the study, not the staff report. Am I correct on that? Mr. French?
It is on the screen, Carly, page 844 of the agenda package.
Oh, it must be 830. Well, let's see.
Okay. The screen that's sharing--
It's a green--
--from where I might, it shows exhibit 16.
It's a, it's a green chart, green and white chart.
Is it, it might be the roadway segment table that showed the total daily volumes?
Yeah, that's, that's the one. Apparently I--
Okay.
Yeah.
And what was the specific question about it?
It shows that there's less traffic in the afternoon at Brennan and 120 than there, than there is--
Afternoon.
Well, less traffic with the project than there was, would be without it. It's 850? It's in that--
I must be looking at the wrong, sorry. The roadway segment table is just daily trip. So, are you talking about maybe an AM and a PM peak hour comparison?
I believe, is that it? No, it's--
The screen that's sharing online still just shows exhibit 16.
No, it's, it's beyond that one. It's in the same, same group. Well, anyway, I, I'm just saying, it's the only one that would show, it's the only thing that shows this--
Decrease.
A decrease. There's no other decrease listed. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Table five. I'm seeing now table five, intersection operations analysis.
Okay.
And which intersection were we looking at?
Brennan and 120, the intersection.
So, I see with the existing, it goes from six seconds in the AM to eight and a half seconds--
It's not a timing issue. It's not a timing issue. It's actual numbers. But obviously, I wrote down the wrong number, page number, so I apologize on that.
No worries. I'll be here if we, if we've--
I'm not going to search for it though. Okay.
Mike?
Yes.
Is it these colors?
Mike, I thought it was one of the--
Blue.
I'll, I'll, I'll figure it out later. I'm not, I'm not, I don't want to hold this up any more than I have. I have a question concerning-- Well, somebody brought it up at one of the previous meetings. They talked about a pork chop type of barrier on Brennan. And I'm not sure if this should go to the developer or to the city, this question. But as I understand it, if we were to put a pork chop forbidding a west, a left turn off of Brennan onto 120, that would not be in the state. Page 848, is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. It would not be, it would not require state permission because it's on Brennan. Is that correct?
I don't believe so. Whether it's technically on city property, let's call it, or not, it would be affecting the operations of the state facility. And just as common courtesy, we'd want to at least coordinate. Those pork chops usually go into the roadway that they're on to ensure that the movement happens as, as is prescribed in the improvement. So, again, common courtesy would say we would coordinate with Caltrans and work with them on any operational adjustment to, to their facility.
Okay. But would a pork chop be something that we could consider? Once we've expressed the courtesy we've required?
I mean, I, I can, yes, we can absolutely consider it. I don't know how, I can't speak for Caltrans and what their policies, rules, guidelines are in terms of, you know, traffic flow onto their facilities, but it's--
I mean, it's going to irritate a lot of people in the community who want to turn west, but it's going to, it's going to remove Brennan as the racetrack. It's, it would, and it would stop the broadsides. I see a hand raised in the back. Please, please do. I think he's Caltrans.
Chair and commission, my name is Erwin Dobajwa. I'm acting deputy district director of traffic operations for Caltrans.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah.
Could you, yeah, if you could adjust the mic, thank you.
So, so you're right. Pork chop, yeah, that will definitely protrude in the, in the state highway. And as you know, railroad is so close, but that would be a good interim option till the project, the safety project proceeds and is constructed. So, that could be one of the good options to, to consider as part of improvement to restrict left-in and left-out from the highway. Although you may need some adjustments, as you know, it's so close.
Yes, it is.
And, yeah. So, to answer your question, yes, that would be one of the good options in the interim.
Just want to say that I did not expect to hear that I had a good idea tonight. So, thank you so much.
Usually, usually we do, and, and, and a lot of locations where it's physically constrained and there, there are safety issues, we do consider pork chop. And we do recommend pork chops to be considered to minimize conflict points because that's what it is, the people pulling in, making left-outs. And, and as you know, and I think I've heard from a lot of folks, there's a lot of traffic increase because of the housing in neighboring cities and traffic moving everywhere, actually. So, it's including everywhere, so it continues to grow and--
Well, we very specifically have an industrial park locating across the street--
Yes.
Across the road. We have, we have a whole lot of stuff.
I wasn't aware of that, so that's something will bring more truck traffic and--
Big trucks. It's a steel fabrication plant.
Okay. Well, that was not considered as part of when we studied the, the whole safety thing, but maybe that should be considered as part of overall improvement of intersections, something to more, move more quickly. But again, the big elephant in the room is the railroad. No matter how fast we can move in, in our Caltrans process, we still have to encounter, work with them. And they take anywhere from 24 to 36 months to, just to get their approval process and working with them. And again, PUC as well, so.
See.
I'm happy to answer any more question you may have.
Well, thank you for coming forward. Does anyone have any questions of Caltrans? I will ask one more--
Sure.
--before I, I see the floor. There's been a lot of discussion about Caltrans taking his time. And as someone who has looked at Caltrans projects in the past, your agency is somewhat notorious for taking a lot of time. What is realistic for us going forward?
I think Mr. French very thoroughly explained the whole, the pit process, the project initiation document process, already being kicked off, so we're already working on it. And again, from anywhere from 12 to 18 months, could be sooner depending on how we complete our studies. And just to answer your question, we, we do go by all the processes set up, state and federal laws. So, that's what we all have to kind of abide by. So, and then project approval, environment document phase, that's something is the NEPA and CECO laws. We got to have to work with that, come up with the preliminary design, and come with the preferred alternative once you complete the PNED. And then you get into design and get approval to proceed to work with the, our right-of-way process going through the railroad and acquisition also. Those are major risks because you're going to have to acquire property going on the north side. And there is no way you can build with an existing footprint. I mean, there's signal alternative, there's roundabout alternative. We can consider a few more alternatives to see if we can expedite, but then you're moving intersection north, working with railroad, they need certain clearance, working, so it, it has a lot of risk built into those things. It may take 24 to 36 months depending on how quickly railroad can come back to us. And that may be the critical path for the project. And then we are working in between the right, the design process, the PSNE we call it, plan, specification, and estimate. And then it gets, goes through the California Transportation Commission for the vote and goes through advertising process and bidding and award process, and then goes to construction. So, anywhere from three to four, 40 years to five years depends on how quickly we can work with railroad. And that's what I see as a major risk for this project. But I like pork chop.
Okay. When you say--
That's something, that's something. Pork chop could be very quick. I hope, again, we may have to still work with railroad and kind of give, because when we did flashing beacon on 120, they said move away from railroad, go on other side. So, you may be surprised coming back from Manteca, you may see why the flashing light is on left side, why it's not on right side, thanks to railroad. We worked with them. It took us 18 months just to, them to respond to us. So, yeah. So, that's the whole process. And I'm glad Pork Chop brought me here, otherwise I was just sitting in the back listening to the cops.
Okay. Thank you very much. Does anybody else have any questions?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Arch.
I have a quick question for you. So, I've, I've lived here pretty much my whole life, and I know for decades, the city residents have been asking for a stoplight or some sort of traffic control for this intersection. Has the housing development potential played into your decision to create a stoplight or a--
Not, not really.
Not really? Okay.
No. Because it was, I mean, you will not believe me, I live in Modesto and I commute all the time. I've been pushing behind the scene quite a bit to get, because I have heard, and I was trying to make sure, I will be challenging my team from three to four years just to make sure, let's look at delay, let's look at the traffic volumes, see how we can justify. And to answer your question, it does take time to meet the, you have to make sure you meet all the warrants--
Right.
--the signal warrants. So, it did, yeah. Unfortunately, I mean, there's collisions are there and, you know, it's very unfortunate, but that's, and then traffic volumes continue to increase, so it just met the warrants. But I was very instrumental in, in making sure that we continue to move forward. But when development came, it adds more into traffic. I mean, there's existing conditions, changing conditions, whatever you want to say based on the traffic volumes on the, on 120. But when you have development coming, you add more traffic. And then, and I think Mr. French did mention how you segregate number of trips coming from new 72 homes, bringing traffic into the intersection or adjoining intersections. So, that's something, is, is something we're going to have to look at, some kind of interim improvement. But to answer your questions, no, it not really played a big role because we were already working on it. Like you said, it, it took time, but we're working on it to see how we can get approval from headquarters because they, they look at everything. And I know last time, when I came in March meeting, we did not have approval. So, but now we have approval, so 90, 90, 95 percent, at least 90 percent project is, going to proceed forward. Right now, it's in, I've got conceptual approval, so we'll go through PID, then it's going to get program in state highway operations and protection program, safety program. It's a safety, we will call, we call it safety improvement project. So, collision reduction program, project. So, we call it, we have different names, but it's pretty high priority and safety is top priority for Caltrans, and we, we do take it very seriously. So, yeah. So, it's part, it's, it's, we wasn't making, but it took some time, but we're here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Sure. Additional discussion?
I didn't have, if you wanted to go back to your table that you were looking at?
Yes, it was page 848. Thank you whoever found it. And that is it indeed. Just checked.
Yeah. So, I'm, I look, I'm assuming you're talking about the, the queuing from the westbound movement, it looks like, going from 96 to 48?
Yes. That's it.
Yes. So, basically, when there's very low volumes, there, the, the queuing can vary. What we do for this type of analysis, it's called a microsimulation, so it's literally modeling the cars coming through the network at any given time. And you do multiple runs because, you know, one day, traffic might be a certain way, the next day, it might be a little different. And so, it's taking multiple different scenarios where maybe everyone comes out once, maybe the next time, people are more evenly spaced out, and then it averages those results to kind of more accurately reflect what can happen in the real world. And so, in this case, that westbound turning movement, the delay, is because there's very low volumes. And so, in one simulation with the existing, maybe all four cars showed up, and in the next one, two cars showed up. So, that kind of variation is very common when volumes are very low.
It almost looks like then the AM and PM is transposed, like--
We can double-check the results. I think the, the key takeaway for this particular location is that there's about 2,700 feet of available storage. And so, again, whether it's two cars or four cars that are in that queue, there's plenty of room to accommodate the demand. But yes, we, we absolutely can double-check this and make sure that those results are accurately reported.
Well, half, half the, half the, half the number doesn't make any sense. I mean, not--
These are, these are feet, so that's like one to two cars is what we're talking about. So, a queue of 50 feet or 48, in this case, we, we would typically round it, but Caltrans has certain procedures and requirements, and so they want us to present the exact, precise length. And so, in this case, it, the, the software says 48, which is basically two cars. And 96 feet would be about four cars queued. And so, we're saying between two and four cars is what the expected queue would be at this turning movement.
Sure. That one doesn't make sense to me, and it's not going to, so.
Have a question, staff.
We have a question.
I'm going to try real quick. The 48 is not cars.
No, it's, it's, it's feet. Okay.
So, you, you have, so when you queue, you try to decide if there's two or three or four cars queuing or lining up. And then they get 24 feet per car in the way of spacing. And what Carly was just saying was that the numbers are so tiny that the model between two and four cars is just kind of insignificant. I mean, maybe you got that, but--
I heard it.
I was learning with you too.
I, I heard what she said.
Yeah.
But the existing is then cut in half for the existing plus, and shouldn't it be the other way around?
Yeah. It's not, it's not--
It's more, it's more to do with the random variation in, in the way that the runs are. So, we take between 10 and 12 different scenarios for each one of these. And so, even that existing, if, if that existing, maybe if I did 15 runs instead of 10, I might have got 48 the next time. It's just part of the nuances with the software when volumes are very low for a turning movement. If you have much higher volumes, there tends to be more consistency throughout the hour, which is what we're, we're studying this over the course of an hour. And so, this 95th percentile queue is saying that less than 5% of the time, this is the amount of cars that will be queued at this location. So, for this particular movement. And so, again, less than, during this peak hour, less than 5% of the time, you will have two or four cars queued, and it's just a factor of there being multiple scenarios that are run and being very, very low volumes. I know it's a little technical. I'm doing my best. But, but again, I absolutely will double-check that these results were put correctly because it is possible that maybe we swap things and maybe that 48 is supposed to be your existing and 96 should be your existing plus project. So, we can certainly clean that up if there is an error.
That sounds fine. Thanks. I'm sorry, Commissioner, I was--
I had a question of staff. A question was posed about the CCNRs, that they weren't in existence, and condition eight says that they will develop the CCNRs with the city. Now, city doesn't enforce CCNRs, so why, why would you have input at this point?
We don't need to. It is something that the city prefers just to be a party to and a, a part of the process. You're right, we don't enforce them, and, and technically, we have no say on them. But if they'll share what the CCNR say, it, it helps everyone, I believe.
Can I ask a few questions about safety, because I, I feel like that is a big concern here? I, I apologize, I do not have the page numbers, I did read and skim through everything, but there were some statistics up to twenty-twenty-four, December thirty-first, talking about the reported number of collisions on 120 in Brennan. And fifty-three percent of those were broadsides, one fatality, which I know we have had more in the last year. And, let's see. We also had some statistics on, you know, basically what caused those accidents, and I think Brennan was, for, for lack of a better description, people running the stop sign. So I noticed that there are some interim conditions for that intersection on Brennan, South Brennan. And one of the things was improved visibility on the striping and notification of the stop coming up. I did see something also regarding the stop signs, whether or not they would be electrified or flashing. I've noticed some of those around Modesto lately, and I, I mean, to me, they're a great, great asset to country roads and areas that are, tend to be dark. It's basically all around the stop sign, they're red flashing lights, so it's a lot harder to miss it. I don't think that we can do like rumble strips or anything like that, because it's a collector street and it would probably be really loud. But I think that those are all really good interim solutions until we can get to the signal light, so I was just, wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, and we can touch on it. There, yes, a lot of attention to the Brennan 120 intersection. We have data, in the last fifteen years, there were forty-seven collisions at the intersection, including two fatalities, seven major injury, and the rest minor or non-injury. Twenty-four accidents, so about half were caused by stop, stop sign violations, failing to yield or failing to stop. This is data collected by our police department in coordination with CHP.
Okay.
And so, we know people drive unsafely, I mean, everywhere, there's many, many, many intersections, certainly on 120, certainly throughout this region, certainly throughout the state. Caltrans has now said, it was brought up before, that the stop sign was gonna be put in twenty years ago. From all our research, Caltrans has consistently, since about two thousand and five or even before, said, no, it does not meet warrants. It doesn't meet warrants, it doesn't meet warrants, it doesn't meet warrants. What warrants means, it, it doesn't have the justification, it doesn't have the trips, primarily on the Brennan, the north-south, it doesn't have the number of accidents needed. Remember, Caltrans has tens of thousands or more intersections throughout the entire state. So consistently said no, and you just heard from a deputy district director saying they have now said yes. Was it because of this project? Not really. But there has been community push and, and they've relooked at it, right? And, and we have all acknowledged, things have grown around and there are more trips. Of course, there's more trips now than there were, you know, ten years ago. So they're funding an intersection improvement. That process, we're not waiting for funding, we essentially have the funding, we are now going through, Caltrans is going through the process, their process takes a while. We want it to take a while in some regards. Think of the number of lives, the number of trips that use these facilities. We don't want them to just rush and, and do things, right? So there's, there's gotta be a little bit of a design, a thought through, a, a thinking process. Do we want it to take three or four years? Of course not. Do we want them to have started three or four years ago? Of course we do. But this is the process. So ultimate improvement, no one has a crystal ball, we think it's gonna materialize. Caltrans is committed to it to materialize. They said it's a safety improvement, that means the funding is there for the project. Of course, something could happen and, and it doesn't move forward, right? Major budget catastrophe, something. But at this point, Caltrans is committed, they sent us a letter, it's a public document, they sent us a letter saying this is approved, we're moving forward with the process. In the interim, they have provided interim measures, right? These are different things that you can do, and we went through them in the presentation, to notify people that this is an intersection that needs to be paid attention to, right? That's what traffic is. The wider, the opener it is, the more people drive fast, the more notifications they have, the little, the little more tense they get and pay a bit more attention. And so we have long-term improvements and we have recommended interim improvements by Caltrans. And another one was just brought up today, that Caltrans indicated they would explore. We have the aerial up, we'll of course need to coordinate with UP, because there's some right-of-way issues, but all of these things that, you know, we can explore if the commission chooses to move forward with this project. You're not gonna solve all the safety issues on the roads, it's, it's impossible. I am heartened, unlike the last twenty years, I'm heartened to see that Caltrans has committed to improving this intersection and is looking at interim improvements.
Kind of a follow-up question in regards to traffic on Ulri. I know that it's, it is a collector street or an arterial street, I can't remember what the exact wording is. Would it be city public works that would have to look at some possible measures down Ulri and especially that curve onto Brennan that's kind of notoriously dangerous?
Yeah, any street within city property is within our purview, and yes, we do have a traffic calming process, so any resident can say, we'd like you to look at this intersection, this roadway, this whatever, and we can explore things like signals, speed bumps, speed humps, crosswalks, other things that, you know, we don't use as much, but we can explore that. This is how cities work, if we start to see that there's more traffic, more concerns, higher speeds, then we can explore that. One of the things that was raised is the cut-through of Riesling. Now, first of all, your roadway classifications work in such a way, they go from most impacts and conflict points to least. So your residential road is gonna have all your driveways, right? Conflict point everywhere, but it has lower volumes. As you grow expressways or highways like 120, you want to limit the amount of conflict points or ingress egress points as much as possible. Think about if you're on an expressway and you want to get from point A to point B, you don't want, you know, a hundred conflict points or ingress egress points, right? You try to limit those as much as possible. Many of these were developed many, many years ago, certainly, you know, some of them before the city was a city in nineteen fifty-seven, and, you know, Caltrans had, had different rules. So you want to maintain the, you know, the preferred dynamic in, in your roadways. The other thing that we genuinely thought through, and this was raised twice in this conversation, people use Brennan right now as a pass-through, people use Walnut as a pass-through sometimes. You're now, it's this notion that you're gonna take trips from the new intersection and put them onto the highway, but the reverse works as well. You could take trips from the highway and put it into your neighborhood by creating now another open point, an ingress egress point. So for many of these reasons, right? And crossing the railroad, you've now created another crossing at the railroad, a potential dangerous situation. So we did genuinely think about these things, people are gonna have their own opinions on, you know, my answer or, or look into that, but that's the, the thought process that went into that. Certainly UP would have a hard time with it, and, and my, my guess is, Caltrans, and he's here, but Caltrans would have a, a hard time with that as well.
Last, last thing regarding that, is it, has it been considered, and I know I mentioned this to you before, but especially with the Shadowwood Park, I walk by there pretty frequently, and a lot of times there's kids out there playing ball and whatnot. Would it be possible to put like speed bumps or some sort of slowing mechanism around the park, just because it is open and you do have a lot of kids out there?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And we go through a process and, and we think it's a good process where someone petitions, we look at it, our engineer and our staff look at it, and someone has to collect sixty percent of their neighbors' consent to the item. So we look at, you know, say it's an intersection, we look at a certain distance, three hundred feet past the intersection, if it's a roadway segment, all the neighbors along that section, because people will view things differently. Not everyone, and we've heard it here as well, not everyone appreciates stoplights and having to stop when, when they think they don't need to. Not everyone appreciates speed bumps or, or other things. And so we go through this process where sixty percent of the residents in that area say, yes, this is what we want, then we look at it further and we can implement it. In fact, we've even set money aside to implement some of these things using Measure K funds. So this is a process we've developed, it's a process, you know, we didn't reinvent the wheel, it's a process we developed in looking at other jurisdictions as well. So yes, we can absolutely consider speed bumps on California.
Thank you.
One of the speakers, I believe, talked about speed bumps, and I think he was talking about Brennan at the time. The city limits run right down the middle of Brennan, is that correct? So if we did something, would we work jointly with the county, or is that just not a possibility?
Yeah, so typically, and I think in our traffic calming, and I'm looking at Bill, speed bumps aren't typically warranted for arterial roadways. Again, your roadway classification, what you're trying to do on that roadway is different than your residential and more local streets, which it's okay to, to slow traffic. I could relook at that, but I think we would perhaps, and our rules say, would not consider speed bumps on Brennan for those.
Drops down to twenty-five when you're heading north.
Yeah, I, I think there's a, a couple of different metrics. We can relook at that, if, if I'm wrong and Brennan is a viable road for speed bumps, we can absolutely look into that.
As crazy as it sounds, I think there was some EMS considerations for arterial roads, like if there was an emergency, not wanting frequent speed bumps, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, and so now they have speed humps and they have speed humps with kind of a car out in the middle that's sized appropriately for primarily.
EMS.
Fire trucks, not necessarily ambulances, but yeah, public safety is not overly fond of speed bumps.
Gotcha.
For those reasons.
Questions? Discussion?
And, and just to note, we can respond to the other questions that were posed by the residents if the commission so chooses.
I think I have one that I can respond to regarding the, the senior housing that was first planned for that area. That was back right before the freeze on annexation, I believe, in the city. And the developer at the time, who was actually looking to do the senior housing in that area, he had a catastrophic health event and between the freeze and, and that, that just kind of stopped. So I'm gonna assume that after several years, that the Carr family sold to the Murphy family and, you know, unfortunately, not always do things carryover. So here we are, you know, twenty years later, and we're looking at just what the, what the sphere of influence zoning is, which is low-density residential. So unfortunately, that's just where we're, we're at, so. Yeah.
Could you come forward, because we can't hear you?
Just Jalen's response to you about the speed bumps, how he takes into consideration, or the city takes into consideration what the community wants, these surrounding neighbors and so forth. There's a new petition online that the community has signed, it's only been out twenty-four hours, and we've got almost two hundred signatures. The community has spoke. We don't want this right now, let's fix the traffic problems first. So, you know, we have the city manager saying, on one hand, that we're listening to the community and the surrounding neighbors regarding the issues, let's not put the cart before the horse, let's fix the problem first.
I think he was specifically talking about the traffic control.
And, and, and that's what we're talking about.
No, there's a specific application, you get signatures for that traffic control measure.
Okay, but he's saying we get the community input. We, you've got community input on this, volumes of it, just, that's, I mean, we've got to take that into consideration. Thank you.
I do have a request of staff. I would like to know, I mean, the pork chop idea, which seems good to me, and maybe Caltrans, may not, it may have implications beyond what I'm seeing. For instance, it would have the impact of pushing traffic down to Walnut for those who wanted to go west out of the neighborhood. And so I think we should, maybe if we could compile a little data around that, it might be helpful going forward if, if that becomes a consideration.
So in these instances, Planning Commission makes a recommendation onto City Council. If a majority of the commissioners felt, one, that the project, you know, moves forward and that a pork chop should be considered, we would explore as best we can prior to City Council, right? It would be a Planning Commission recommendation to look at that, we would explore it as, as best as we could, bring it onto the City Council, tell them that Planning Commission's recommendation was X, and they could, of course, say, yes, we would like this further explored, or no, we don't believe it's justified or warranted or the right thing, for whatever reason.
Sure.
And if they approved it with that, then we would continue to explore it into implementation, coordinate with Caltrans, coordinate with the developer, all of that, until the, the subdivision was developed again, if it was approved.
Okay.
I will say that I know that a good majority of people who use that intersection will not be happy if we're putting a pork chop. Like, I, I know that it's, it's easing the apparent safety issue, but people, even with the safety issues, choose to use that intersection and turn left, and so I think we're doing a disservice to them, especially, I'm just thinking all the parents that go to Van Allen every morning to drop their kids off, that, that added to their already chaotic morning. I just know a lot of people who would be against it.
Makes it more chaotic if they get T-boned in that intersection.
Absolutely. I'm, I'm not saying it doesn't, but people who are using that intersection are using it with the apparent risk that's there.
I sympathize with the comments about the, the measuring of the traffic, that it wasn't, it might not have been an ideal time or an ideal day or an ideal week or, and, and who knows, maybe even if you picked a better, a different time, to get different figures, it still might not be ideal. But we're looking at a small area here, and we've got all of 120 and we've got Brennan, we've got things beyond California, Brennan, Riesling and Salivo. Some of you have been here long enough to know, when the Thuleburg fog comes and you pull up to 120 on Brennan, you can't see, you can't see either direction. And then when the farmer there on the corner grows his corn, six, seven, eight feet tall, you can't see to the left. And to have houses being completed in twenty-seven and to still be two years away, three years away from Caltrans, having figured out what to do with that intersection, we've got an allegiance to the members of our community for their safety. It, it seems like putting the cart before the horse to approve this now, without Caltrans having done their, their, their work.
Play my two cents. I requested from the police department a, a collision, traffic collision report for that intersection for the 10 years from January 1, 2015 to December 31, 2024. And in that time period, 10 years, we have gotten 30 accidents, 30 crashes. That's 10 a year. Two of those crashes resulted in two fatalities. Five major accidents. My family members, two people were not moving their vehicle. One was making a left turn on 120 onto Brennan, got rear-ended. Another person was coming southbound on Brennan at the stoplight, going to go across 120 onto Brennan, got slammed in the front. Neither vehicle was moving. This was 25 years ago. Since then, school district has moved the boundaries of Van Allen to the east, increasing more people going west on Highway 120. We all know there's more traffic on the freeway. There's more develop, there's been more development on, off of Brennan, you know, Sanchez and then Bellatera. We have no idea what Weldway is going to be like. I mean, I personally do not make a left turn on Brennan anymore just because there's so much traffic coming south on Brennan to 120. And we're going to be dealing with steel trucks. They're going to be bringing steel into that plant and the finished product is coming out. Are they going to go north on Brennan to Mariposa? Are those roads capable? I like, I like the development. It's great, but there's a saying, timing is everything. And I think unfortunately, the timing of Florsheim developing this, this project prior to having some sort of safety mechanisms on that intersection is premature. I'm, I'm concerned and that as, as a citizen here, you know, thank God, nobody in my family has gotten killed on that road, but it's getting more dangerous. It's getting more dangerous and so I'm, I'm concerned. And if we have finished houses in 2007 and it takes three to four or five years to get something finished, we're going to have a new development going on, we're going to have whatever's happening in the steel fabrication plant going on, and that intersection's not going to be any more secure. I, you know, I don't know if Caltrans can reduce the speed limit prior to getting that intersection coming into town, something faster than 65, 70 miles an hour. I mean, people don't do 50 on that road. They don't do 50 before they get to the railroad tracks, you know, on, on McKenna. It's, it's, it's dangerous, so I'm, you know, unfortunately, I'm not in favor of, at this point in time, on moving forward unless there is a roundabout or a traffic light. Well, if they're, if they're big enough.
So I, I share the safety concerns, but, but I also have other concerns, which is the state of California is constantly shoving low income housing down cities' throats that may not necessarily want that. It's, it's been designated for residential for over 20 years.
You know what? This, if you'd like to reopen the public comment portion, we can. Otherwise, this is the time when the commission is debating. So I'd like to allow the commissioner to continue her thoughts. Thank you.
We currently have a very good, very reputable builder that's wanting to basically bring to fruition what has been planned for the city for 20-plus years. I feel like we could be kicking the can down the road with a lot of these things because this project does bring beautification into the entrance of Escalon, which right now you see a bunch of oleanders and weeds. There are improvements to the infrastructure. There are going to be eight moderately affordable homes built for people that want to buy here but maybe can't afford. They're not going to be cheap, but they're still more realistic for people. It's also going to be on MID, which is probably in and of itself going to be a draw. I do feel that the safety upgrades that have been requested in the interim will improve visibility at that intersection. We obviously cannot control what people are going to do, if they're going to obey the law or not. I'm not sure if there is some measures that we could take for more policing or something like that to possibly deter people from speeding down that road. And I think the fact that Caltrans is willing to basically pick up the tab for this intersection is a major improvement over what we've been hearing for decades. I think that this project meets what we have designated in our general plan. And I feel like after years of Florsheim working on this, we would be punishing them basically for things that are out of their control. And that's all I have to say.
Comments?
Yeah, I think Florsheim has produced a beautiful product for us. I think the improvements to the park are amazing amenities that we haven't been able to put into other parks for some time now that we've been wanting. Another park with a restroom, which is very much needed in the city. We had to have a portable restroom at Brennan Park this year for soccer games because there's no restroom there, but we had to use a lot, utilize a park for soccer games because our recreation is growing so much, which is amazing. And having the pickleball courts actually striped out. Pickleball, I personally don't play it, but it is a crazy craze. I work in Oakdale and they put in some brand new pickleball courts and the number of keys that we had to like register and give out was crazy for those pickleball courts. So I know that this is going to be parts of the park, of a very underutilized park, I feel like, that are going to get used and are going to be of benefit to our town. I know that Brennan and 120 is not a great intersection, but everyone knows that Brennan and 120 is not a great intersection. So there's those who choose to use that intersection at their own risk, they know this, and there's others that choose to go down to Walnut or go down to the stoplight. Can you read the numbers again for how many accidents over the last 10 years?
So I have 15, he had 10, 47 collisions in 15 years, so about three per year, which is, I think drives with the 30 over 10 years. Two fatalities, seven major injury, so three, three collisions a year.
Three collisions a year and, and I'm not downplaying the devastation of, of deaths. Like no one wants to see people die in a collision, but in all honesty, three accidents a year is not crazy, especially not for an intersection along a major highway.
I'm sorry, can we have some order?
As someone who has lived in Escalon my entire life, I'm excited about this development. I cannot buy a house in Escalon. We have to rent because there's no houses to buy. We have people who wrote in letters who are so excited about this development because they had to move out of Escalon, grew up here, moved out of Escalon, and now have the possibility of buying a house, a nice house in Escalon where the rest of their family still lives, where they bring their children to our school district, even though they live outside city limits because they want their child to be raised here. Like this is a great opportunity. And I think it's amazing that Caltrans showed up here today. I don't normally see that in my capacity in Oakdale or Escalon. I think this is the first time I've ever seen a Caltrans agent show up at one of these meetings. So the fact that he's here saying that this is a project that is happening, that they are taking on, footing the bill for, and yes, will it take some years? Absolutely. But the timeline for this new project is two, three, four, five years. So by the time this project is done, that intersection should be done when the majority of the impact from these houses are actually there. So I just don't see how we could say no to this project when everything is lining up. All the data from professionals who know what they're doing, because I certainly don't know how to do a traffic study, but the data showed that the additional traffic was basically nil. It was not going to add that much time to either intersection at Brennan or Walnut. It wasn't going to add that many more trips. I just, I don't feel like there is enough here to warrant rejecting this project or recommending rejecting this project.
Let me ask the city attorney for his advice on this. Before I provide my comments, would it be appropriate to reopen the public portion of the hearing to allow two or three folks who want to speak to, to address the commission?
You've already provided an opportunity for multiple speakers to comment multiple times.
That is correct.
If you open it up, you're going to have to let everybody have another turn. I don't think we could just say only two more people.
Okay, thank you. I agree that this is an excellent project. It's exactly what is needed for that area, and I think we have a fine developer with a good reputation who's willing to come here and do this. That said, I can't choose. It's, it's almost as if we're choosing to allow additional mayhem to occur at that And while I would love to vote to approve this project because I think it's a good project, I would only be willing to do it with the caveat that the city move forward on some form of mitigation in the interim between, as soon as we can get it, to the completion of Caltrans' work, which I believe they will carry forward. And if they don't, we'll have some form of mitigation. So that would be my bottom line if indeed we get a motion to move forward. Do I hear such a motion?
Can I ask a quick question? This is going to, to City Council regardless, correct?
Yes.
We're choosing whether to recommend or not. Okay. I would be willing to make a motion to move forward. I think that we might need to address any conditions that we would want added to that or if there's any feedback on that.
So I'm trying to think what we would put in the motion then.
So as, as we're shuffling papers, we'll just make it clear for everyone. So Commissioner Gonzalez, you are agreeing with Chair Dunbar's to recommend approval to the City Council with traffic mitigation measures considered.
I think right now we have a split commission is probably how I'm reading this. I would be in favor of moving the project forward as it is written. I'm not sure that we have a consensus up here, so I don't know if we want to make any more discussions. If you want me to make the motion, I'm happy to do so.
I just wanted to make sure that the commission is clear on what is being discussed and what is being voted on, staff and the community. You all can deliberate as you choose, but I just, as we take a step, we'll, we'll reset the step to make sure everyone's on the same page.
Are you wanting additional mitigation?
I want, I want.
Is it already listed?
Yes, I want additional mitigation.
You want your pork chop?
I want, well, my pork chop seems like a good idea. Caltrans thought so. So yeah, I like that, but it doesn't have to be the pork chop. It could be, it could be any number of things, but I think our recommendation cannot go forward to the City Council and say, yeah, everything's cool, Highway 120 in Brennan. Yeah, well, let them take their chances. I'm not, I'm not good with that.
Is it possible to do some sort of, I don't want to say backup plan, but if, if there, I, I do think that there are other things in place that account for improvements to this intersection over, you know, the next five, 10 years. I don't know if we want to stipulate like a timeframe that maybe some of these improvements need to start happening.
That's my position. They need to start happening immediately.
And then the other thing is, is that, you know, like the gentleman from Caltrans mentioned, we're going to run into Union Pacific just the same as they are. So I don't know how much flexibility the city has in making.
That happens no matter what.
Yeah.
No matter what. Any change at that intersection is going to require working with Union Pacific and the state.
Right, but if we do this, we're putting that on the developer versus Caltrans.
We're making the developer partially responsible for working with the city to push this thing forward. That's how I see it. And I'd like to enlist the developer to helping, in, in helping us find a solution in what I consider a very serious problem. Like Steve and others, I will not use that intersection turning west. I go down to the lights, I don't care how long it takes me. So that's my bottom line. I, I want to vote for it, but not without a recommendation. And it's not even our choice, the City Council can ignore it, but I would not feel right passing forward a recommendation to approve this project unless the city were also simultaneously and in parallel trying to develop a solution at 120 and Brennan.
What, what, what is in the city's jurisdiction to do in terms of traffic control at that intersection? Because I, I know Caltrans ultimately has the, the final say over the highway.
I'll answer it in a slightly different way. As, as was answered before, we would coordinate with Caltrans, no doubt about it. The motion or the recommendation can be as specific or as broad as desired. Broad looks like we direct staff to explore with Caltrans various mitigation measures, including a pork chop, right turn only, you know, at such time. And I think we should nail down the timing. Is this before, after, during? Is it just consideration or is it, you know, need to be implemented? Specific would be some of the things I just touched on. This improvement needs to be made prior to, to this date. Remember, this is a recommendation on to the City Council and City Council can choose to. choose to carry that recommendation forward or not. So in between planning commission and city council, we would do as much exploration as possible. And if council decided to move forward with that, then we would get into this, discussions with Caltrans. I don't wanna stand here and say we can absolutely do a pork chop, because if we get into it and we realize we don't have enough right-of-way because of the UP railroad, then all of a sudden, we've committed to something that we can't do outside of, you know, sort of normal course of business, right? But if the idea is to explore, you know, and either come back to council or implement, you know, prior to the first home or the 37th home or whatever number we pick, right, we can, staff can commit to that, of course.
My position is that I don't think what we have seen in this proposal vis-à-vis Brennan and 120 is adequate. And I just think we need to be looking at additional movement. And that's the recommendation, that the city move forward with a parallel track. Neighborhood with its park, but also some kind of safety improvements, enhanced safety, not just for this neighborhood and all the people who live in the community, but also we're gonna have those steel trucks coming to Weldway. And so that's where I see the issue. And it doesn't, I don't know that we, I mean, if the, if the city staff wants to put its 37th house designation, or the 50th house, or the 10th house, that's fine with me. But that's something that I think that staff has a better grasp on than I do. I just wanna see movement toward additional safety. And I can't vote for it unless we have that recommendation.
I feel the safety issues fall under the purview of the city.
I think.
There is some formula that basically says, though, that a developer's responsible for their portion of the impact, correct? Like, you cannot stick them with the entire cost of the intersection.
That is right. Yeah. Okay. So let's, let's explore that. There are existing deficiencies in any number of facilities or intersections. And yeah, state law in terms specifically in regard to fees, there's a nexus. You have to make a connection that the fee is proportional to the impact. And so you can't require or charge a fee that is unproportional to the impact. And, and our documents, our development impact fee study has said this intersection is the responsibility or proportional share of about 23% of all new development. This study was done in, I don't know, 2016, 2019, something like that. And so, yeah, there's, there's a proportional share of the impact, right, the intersection to the development.
I don't know if we want to speak to the developer, what they're comfortable with in terms of staggering building until such time as certain mechanisms are put into place that might slow or deter traffic, that would ultimately be up to staff to look into. Or do we wanna just explore options and have this finalized at city council?
Really up to the commission at this point?
So that means that we need a motion that contains our recommendation, and then vote on that recommend, on that motion.
Okay. It looks like our recommendation has some ordinance numbers missing.
You just do XX.
Do XX?
Yeah.
Gotcha. All right. I will move to approve resolution PC number 2025XX, recommending that the Escalon City Council make the findings and certify the initial study and mitigated negative declaration, a mitigated monitoring and reporting program, Exhibit 17. Approve resolution PC number 2025XX, recommending that the Escalon City Council authorize an application to initiate proceedings to San Joaquin County LAFCO, and recommending adoption of ordinance XXX to pre-zone the two parcels on Exhibit 18. Approve resolution PC 2025XX, recommending that the Escalon City Council approve a tentative subdivision map, a specific plan, an inclusionary housing agreement, a development agreement, and an annexation, and recommend adoption of ordinance number XXX for the planned development, and recommend adoption of ordinance number XXX for the development agreement between the developer and the city, and all are contingent on a future approval by San Joaquin LAFCO, Exhibit 19. And then I would also amend it by adding that we would direct city staff to look into traffic mitigation measures for the intersection of Brennan and Highway 120.
Do I hear a second?
I will second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries 3-2.
Oh, sorry, we're not done yet.
We're not done yet. Seems like it, doesn't it? Our administrative matters. Do we have any report from staff?
There are no administrative matters today.
No staff communication?
I have none.
I can't think of anything else.
Okay. Commissioner, communication?
I'm done.
I just wanna thank staff for all the time that you put into the staff report. That was ginormous and took forever to go through, so thanks a lot. No, but you did a great job and I think for the presentation.
And we'll say, these are not easy. These are hard. We have different opinions on how things should move forward. And, you know, kudos to you on the deliberative process and, you know, sticking with what you believe is, is right. So from staff's standpoint, well done.
Not, not easy.
Yeah, this, this package was, was very well done. It's just the timing was wrong. It might have been.
Any other communication?
No.
Commissioner Willis? I have no comments, other than to say I think staff, as usual, has done a good job. And I thank you for your patience and direction. With that, this meeting is adjourned.
This is not a typical.